It is now six oh nine and we're gonna call the meeting to order. This is the regular November meeting of the North Port of Education. First on our agenda is public comments. We have a member of the public here today. And so, but before I call the comment, I'd like to make our customary announcement, which is that we ask all comments be limited to five minutes. But we will use our policy to not answer a public comment directly, but rather to wait until after the meeting and then if it's appropriate, someone will get back to whoever comments with no information or answers. That's it. Would you want to speak, member of the public?
Thank you guys.
All right, and we are also online through Zoom, but we don't have anyone there. So before we move to our next space, I do have a comment that I would like to make. Tonight is the last meeting that we'll have with Jill Hall. Jill has been a member of this board for a long time, twelve years. Most of which I think she has served as secretary of the board. She's been a very devoted officer for a long time and a really very invaluable and steady force on the board. I'm very sad to see you both leaving. Thank you very much for all your contributions.
Thank you all. It's been a pleasure having you know when I started this journey. I would be here twelve years later, Blackstone. I am happy to, I'm happy to do it. There was lots of ups and downs, but positive and encouraging things to happen. And I'm happy to see it all, well, see some of the things that happened. I will meet you all. You're all great. Welcome, Jenny. Twelve years you're in Florida.
Four firsts. Although she wasn't able to make it tonight, which is really unlike Sally, it's also the last official meeting with Sally Carr on our board. Sally has been a member for a total of twenty-two years. Really very, very devoted and absolutely dedicated member. I think she spent ten of those years as chairman, six of them as vice chair. It's really a stellar record of service and devotion. And though like Jill, I know that she has always done exactly what she thinks is right for the school and for North Port. And I really appreciate both of them and value all of their efforts for this school. So even though she's not here, I'm gonna have a round of applause for her. Okay, so then moving on to the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting. I have a copy of those minutes in the paper.
So pending one change of Mrs. to Dr. I would maybe approve the minutes of the regular meeting about February fifth, twenty-one.
Okay. Is there a second? Second. All those are big ones?
Aye.
And Donald says. Okay, great. That motion passes. Correspondence. I do have correspondence I'd like to read. This is a letter from Judy Ludwig from the, she's a volunteer fire department secretary. She wrote to Sandy Lysner, who are not female members of the hotel students, saying, "Thank you so much for having students from the hotel who just paid in the fire department's nine eleven ceremony. Their singing was the highlight of the event. It was wonderful seeing the brightest man face him as he celebrated such a song. The ceremony was made more memorable due to their generosity of giving up their life." Thank you, sincerely, Judy. So that, thank you very much, Judy, and to the fire department. That really was a very meaningful ceremony. And I'm so proud of our students for being involved and for just for giving up themselves that way and for, you know, participating in something that was, you know, that's really important to remember and to learn. And now we'll move on to the super comments report.
I'd just like to go in, congratulations and gratitude to Jill and to Sally for all the service. I have to say it's been a pleasure working with you. I appreciate all the hard work and things that you've done to make this work such a productive and professional group of people. You've accomplished a tremendous amount in years that I've been doing, exploring to be allowed to have you move on, but I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Any sort of any questions about the bills for the year? Something I wanted to mention, it does not show up. I don't really care. But I did want to, just to be full square, I wanted to tell everyone that Mary Beth approached me about us putting in a bid contracted for design services, for wedding design services to the board, to the board event. So I've done that and she accepted my proposal. So you'll see. Is there a line on this? I just want you to all know that I'm not getting some sort of kickback for this. But I mean, you all know that I've done a lot of work for the school for a long time now. And although, you know, that's something I do with my heart and absolutely feel passionate about doing, I also recognize that my time here is limited. And I think it's important that we establish that those services aren't necessary and we should have budget blocks for it. So that's, that's what's going.
I just answered a question because when I was, I used to do substitute nurse here. And then when I got on the board, Mr. Conover, which at the time told me that I was not allowed to be with substitute nurse anymore because it would be a conflict of interest because I was on the board. I technically need to hire myself.
But I can speak to that. So I did one condition. And Anne was technically not an employee of the board. She was an independent vendor contract, uh, chief of services, which is perfectly applicable, allowable, and there's no conflict of interest. That was the mountain. So I was very confident. It was.
I, I had lots of concerns, but Mary Beth has been very she's been very encouraging and has been doing a lot to like, you know, make sure to cross all the teams down on the ice field and everything. And like I said, to establish, you know, establish a pattern of, you know, you know, one of the things they say is like, you know, you should put your budget where your values are. And if you value that presentation and those ways to communicate, then it's important that we make a little space for, to show.
And this would be perfectly associated with W four and monthly invoices. So she's not on payroll. She's not on employee list. She's
Oh, so that's totally different. Totally different.
Just checking. Certainly, but that's good. And we should, we want to check this, right? I spent time in, in most schools. And can we get that? Well, I mean, you, volunteers were wonderful and we had so many volunteers and could do so many things throughout the start of school. But this is huge. And, you know, for years, we've been talking about, you know, marketing and making public so many of the things that we do and being visible in the community. And for years, Anne has given her time in curriculum documents and web designing, all of that. And it's, it's not feasible that we're gonna always have somebody volunteering to do it. So when she says, I, I, I seriously think that we need to have it in the budget as a service, contracted service that, you know, you know, when she moves on as people eventually do, you can, you'll have a spot dedicated in the present part of the platform. And very, very pleased that she agreed to do it. And there we go.
Any other questions about money?
Uh, yeah. Check.
And these exporters and coaches have got their concrete work.
Yeah. He did a really nice job. And that has been added to our list that we will do on a regular basis to get it sealed at least every year or every other year. Didn't realize that that was a thing that was advisable to do. And so we looked at one day and they jumped us out of there. And so, you know, we thought, well, this is that, it should be sealed. And I said, well, I didn't know that, but now that you know it was the stairs, the concrete stairs over here. So we will, we put that on schedule.
And the, and the walkbridge.
Oh, jeez, I mean, that is a big chunk of, a big chunk.
We gotta get to our, our things to do on a, on an ongoing basis. So we'll do that. And while we're on the line of, you know, security, I told you in my message that the EverSource people have been contacted. They came out. We've already been assigned their fifteen hours out there. None of them even know that we're looking for it. It's awful. We will contact Matt again and tell him they came, they saw, they did that contract. They need to come back again.
It's a safety issue, yeah.
It's huge.
It's no big deal.
They're on a timer when they're solar. Does the timer need to be changed? An hour different?
Well, even if it was different, how different it should be at the end of that. It's a, it's
I don't know if this was all under that same category there. But the light down by the public playground, there's a light outside the door, the small door to the public playground. There's a fence, the fence door. And it was a motion sensor and the motion sensor had been broken. And we have a full electric.
Oh. So I think that one would be ours. The, we, these up here are actually EverSource. This is a public road officially. So those are EverSource lights. But we'll have to have Neil check the one out there. That's not a street light. These are at least So we'll have to check the one by the public playground.
I know he doesn't got it. I'll just go in.
And I gotta confirm that he gets this. Okay. It's on the to-do list.
And this is, this is a swing also.
Yeah, well, that's the one waiting for the part. Is that the, yeah. We're saying, we're part of ten. And is that something that Neil and Tyler can pick or do?
I don't know.
We'll check on that.
Ask Neil about it.
They keep asking you?
Oh, people do. Okay. And they come and tell me it's very dangerous. I'm like, that's where we are. I wonder what he's saying.
You know, it's a very, usually a policy.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll follow up with Neil on that. Okay, go. So we need to pack it with a list that we put together that's just based on past dates. But by next meeting, we'll have to vote on the, the board meeting dates. And then Kathy submits them to the town and it will become public record. And then if we have to change them, they become special meeting. So it's really important to try to get it as accurate as we can. With the weather and circumstances along the lines, changes, I will have to make some changes periodically, but for the most part, if you've got questions or any discussions between now and next month, open the law, determine whether it's we can always switch off or not.
Yeah. So that doesn't, as long as you have it on a date, that doesn't make a special meeting.
The date and time has to be the same, but it can be moved however. So if it was a bad weather day, particularly when you cancel school, you still have a good meeting.
Yeah. We can't do anything about that. I mean, when those days are snow days.
The state department will take, no, absolutely no.
I can understand because with other school districts, they're not having the people really need to do that.
Well, I think they're more afraid of it being reviewed. But in any event, I thought we had a very good plan for my last year. We reused snow days. It, it became, you know, expected when we switched that. But as of right now, anyway, the Biden, it's not Biden's, it's the director's. It's not, it's a very limited circumstance, which primarily if children are quarantined for technical or other course contacts, it's about being quarantined. Or if it's explicitly in a Bible to law, a C P T, I O two to accommodate students. So, you know, we'll talk about the calendar, calendar in a moment. But the board meetings typically if schools canceled, we don't open school. And we canceled the board meeting that was scheduled. But the board can certainly determine now that if schools canceled on the board meeting, that we will, which should do. That would definitely be my, my preference, that we might just switch this in.
As long as people have a, like, prison access, right? Like, if it's such a, if it's a kind of store, we don't have to. That's a good point. I guess we have more than any, we would have to, like, just take it, take it immediately.
But would the, would the meeting have to be on the town website with this information?
Oh, we have it. We have it on ours. And actually, the only thing we'll do is I'll set, once these are in place, I'll set those meetings for all of them. But, oh, yeah, I'll give them to the town right then. So they can also It'd be really good to, because I'm, I'm totally guilty of this, but I'm gonna try. I think our, you know, and I would really ask everyone else to try to, let's really look at these dates and make sure that we don't want to change them. Because in the years that we have, like, said yes, and then we changed all of them, it just messes up everything. Like, it, it gets, they get in wrong with the town and then, like, they're wrong with the town website and everybody gets confused for months and months. So these are all, this is all the first two things.
So there's the two days and it followed pretty much the same schedule, what was always called if that, the dates have changed to the two things.
And this is on the stage. So January twenty twenty three.
And then you remember that in January and February.
No, no, wait. It's supposed to be the seventh week. Maybe like, or the next, the first and the third. So it's the third and then the seventh.
Okay. We scheduled to in January and February, so in the event of budget meeting, they're there. We have the op, you know, option of not having a second meeting if we don't need it. But they're in there for just interest.
It's a, it's a really good thing for new board members to know that the first two day, the meeting to the first two day of the month.
And I think we moved to the first two day so that people were available to go to the finance meeting on this second meeting.
And there's only time for tonight. That is a problem. I was thinking we were closed.
But that's seven thirty.
Right. So we just gotta keep it up. Which, I can ask you, if you're done with the dates, it's, it's already mentioned in the board financing meeting slide. So we'll find out what we discussed before the financial meeting slide. Well, I can tell you that I recently attended a I'm not exactly sure what the meeting was, but I, and I, I may have
I mean, what was that? It's interesting.
No, it's just like, it was people talking about what to do with the rescue fund. It was just like a group of people. And anyway, they, everyone there very clearly stated their preference that they thought if the slide could be covered, buy it with that money from that grant, money that the town already has. And I agree that that was a struggling board and that was going to be great. So, and be very, very anxious to take that next step. So if it is discussed, I would, I don't know if it's not really whoever's able to watch the finance meeting tonight, please pay particular attention to that detail. Where's this emergency fund? So there was, there were funds, grant funds given to towns across Connecticut. I think it's called a rescue. And it's quite a bit of money. It's like, it's like a forty-three thousand, almost eight thousand. Oh, so they need to rescue our slide. But no, we, the, the town received like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And they received it this year and they will also receive it next year. If they're, like every brand, there's like restrictions on how you can spend the money. But one of them is tourism. And so I feel that the slide completely and utterly
Oh, absolutely. It's a then.
Yeah, it is. And so we just need, though, to schedule that work. Because, you know, since this has started, it has been like, oh, we can't schedule. And then we try to schedule and, oh, they're so far out, we can't schedule. Like, I just wanna get on their schedule so that, you know, it's just stopped. It's been like two years. I'm waiting to make this decision and it just it's just gotta be in the people.
I, I believe Matt has committed the town public works department to do the excavating. So honestly coordinated, but, you know, I don't know if it's the board financing or where, but someone's got a push to, to, to actually implement an action plan in place. And I don't know if he I'm happy to do what I can do, but I think it needs to come from
I, I mean, I can tell you, I've been asking every, since I know, to address the, the Slightman's office about it. And I, I know that the message has been loud and clear. So I, I don't really know what the next steps are. But I would ask everyone here to also, like, I mean, just keep, keep kind of banging on drums.
Because, well, and if you want, like, let me know when the next quarter's collecting meeting is. And I will call and ask you for on the agenda and as the superintendent of the board chair, to ask the collection to pay a best
Yeah, let's do that. I'll go, I'll go with you.
I'll go.
Um, and also, I wonder that, you know, that's, that's a nice big grant that's available. Maybe we don't want to use the town balance to do it. Maybe it's better to pay the other folks to do the whole jump. So we can do, like, a schedule all at once. So, you know, just maybe fewer moving parts with public.
I'm assuming for sixteen.
For fifteen, twelve.
They're posted to the jump.
For fifteen. Oh, what time is today?
For thirteen.
Oh, I can do that. Oh. No, it's, you know, I've got to be in the line for six o'clock that night. Um. If there's nothing, if they have a room, I can shut really good.
Three ones I got, yeah.
Okay, all right. So, so I'll follow up with one and get other information. How's it looking? All right. Oh, that's fine. Okay, then we've got a draft calendar. I did meet with the superintendent of the region seven and we are in sync with all of the other schools, including the New York High School in terms of the vacation, the holidays. There are some half days that, but primarily April and December vacations are all the same. The advanced calendar and many districts have moved the April vacation a couple weeks to back up with Easter. But the feeling in region setting was that it would just make it an awful long fall too much, I mean, from vacation to the end of the year. March is a long year and the people, you know, and the record they're doing themselves. I did agree to go along with whatever circumstances was and they not as a secret as they do. That doesn't really look this forth, you know.
Take a different, so region seven, so female school and high school are on spring break. People seventeen, spring, summer first.
And our black students, they're both, we have, we have
Yeah.
In the same and I love it when college students, I just probably wouldn't, but I would help you do it. But it's by some of the districts Connecticut through that week that, like, people started who started and they don't have to always, you know. Okay. And I'm also, we're not, we're going home now. We don't have to vote on it tonight. And I was thinking that probably we'd want to wait for the, for the board members. But it's good to have a, I think, a little bit more easier to be able to digest it. Okay. I'll figure it out. We always want to know. Yeah, and some of the districts, some, you know, bringing out to wait in this thing. But I think it's good to get hands from anybody ahead of that. So we get it out. If you vote on it, you discover, you can have it out for the new year. All right. We finally got the folks to do the gym lights. It's about five thousand dollars. I think we'll be on the dot, on the nose. But we have that in our building improvement line item. So we are gonna move ahead with that. Just need to schedule it at a time where Bert Schuler and John can be there to use the stack or, or like, whatever. When you, so this, Neil did approach me and say, you know, Mary Beth, can we put in the budget to get a, whatever kind of lot of things goes up and down because they could use it to move things up and down in hard flag. So we will look into that and phrase that up in the future. Not that kind of a lot.
Oh, you mean a
A genie that there is.
Okay.
Yeah, that process is a
I have no idea how much they are and it's something that we would be lucky. So I would actually put in a budget and kind of, but we can I'll send you that some folks.
So isn't that a mechanical thing or a mechanical?
Yeah.
What if we just added stairs to that loft?
Well, you could do that, but then you couldn't use that to change, like, the gym, the racing on five sides. It's, you know, things up like the banners and things in the five side. They kind of need something in the, they're doing, so it's I guess, I don't know how often you would use it or how expensive it would be. But even with stairs, preventing cherry deck and equipment and chairs up into that loft area, it's really lifting business. I mean, it climbing up there itself, but climbing up there with the hand pullers, that would, would be a ladder. You mind that, yeah. So, you know, there's no place to put like a staircase. It was, and there is a ladder right now. If you fall, you know, it's like little things that they go down and climb up and it's really, really difficult to move things up and down.
I don't know if that, leave, silver ladder is still there, though, right? So they call them or can extend that. It can, but someone's got that stage.
It can, yeah.
Which is no, you don't have any mechanical
Right, so it's, it's, it's like an extension ladder, so it's a, it's, it's there's no
Right.
But, but then it's, so it's, it's like a vertical ladder with a bucket.
But the thing you're talking about has like a platform that
It has, it either has a bucket and goes up or if it's a scissors, it's a little bit bigger a little harder to measure, but, but it goes up and down.
You could have like a platform to, to, to move on some body. You could actually stand out each other, each other, and you've got a platform to stand on. You're not balancing on it.
Like a four-hundred if you must think right.
Okay. So then the only other, a lot of buildings up from here. So as I shared with these, several of our buildings available cameras are gone. We did not switch over the cameras when we united alarm and moved over to go share for our safety and fire ones. But we did not have enough money in the budget to do that in fact, fifteen thousand dollars. So we are gonna put in the budget for next year. But we may have to look at the budget and see if there's something that we can do to do that sooner than the next July. Because we kind of have the security, the monitoring. So, like, we are looking now at, now, typically around January, February, I'll be like, go through the budget and we look to see where there will be extended funds that we could pull together. But we will do that and we're hopeful that we'll be able to, you know, I'm not gonna say find money in the budget because that's, that's been sitting there and it's not. But we know that, you know, there, when we budget, we budget for exposure, the insurance and the special ed. And if we, you know, don't need it, we give it back to the town. In this case, if we have it and don't need it, I think it would be a burden to the town that, you know, the law is giving them all money back. It wasn't in the budget, but it's really critical that we do it sooner than So we're, we're, you know, hopeful that we'll be able to do it much sooner than July.
And then the ones we don't have related to the damage, what, or what happens?
They're just all the major, they're just, you know, we had, as we've gotten, had you break them, it's been like one, two, or one, and we've gotten like, on site. So better quality, or whatever, whatever. But these are the, I mean, the original old ones and they're just, they're just gone. So that's a bit of a, a concern.
Well, we're, when we contact the district board, we're trying to switch over and we have those components. We want to consider adding an additional camera or two to our playground room. We want to consider having an additional camera or two to our playground room.
And you know, we we keep working with that and.
We're no lights, we decided lights.
It's it's a light that we, we've got a camera down, but it's not picking up because of the light. And we did talk to Matt and he was. Lived one without the ability to do that all day, but we can maybe look at it and see perhaps if we can get another pool of. A different party of light coming, you know, like it's pretty much out there.
But aren't they like, they're like trail cameras that can see things in the night? Well, it's just like the light.
Best cameras and, you know, get the van.
Well, we did. There you go.
Cameras and. And the glare of the headlights under it, unreadable, so it could be in the dark that. The way the, you know, headlights are very much, it didn't pick up the sound. Okay, um and then I did include a copy of the um weather letter that I sent out. Because now that we don't have remote options and. Let's probably remind people that we are living in a fort here and uh. This is how snow days are going to roll out. So other than that, um I don't have any other to share.
No, I did like that letter that I like fully described, that um. It's the decisions are made regionally, they're made, you know, many factors in mind. Because it's so easy to go back to them and they don't realize that.
One of the hardest things, you know, those weather calls and um. Just for the record, in all the years I've been involved in making snow holidays, I've gotten. I'd say hundreds of lots, lots of calls complaining that should have called it, should have called it. But I've never ever gotten a single call that said, gee, thank you, you made a great call. Never, never get that. So um you know, I, sometimes if people have an understanding of what's involved. They're a little bit more understanding when the call doesn't seem quite right, but in any way, that hopefully will help.
Okay, um Lauren is not uh with us right now. But she did send her reports, uh if anybody uh needs to check them, maybe to look over that. I'll just highlight a couple of things for recording. She mentions again the student visit to the fire department. And also talks about the one book, one school initiative, which I I thought was very, which I think is really neat initiative. And just wanted to kind of point out to those who might not be familiar with it. And there's a space on our website for it now. There's a, right on the front page, there's a little box and there's also a. A webpage that'll describe it a bit more, but it's essentially each month they'll they'll choose some topic. Um about inclusion or um. Awareness and I think I'd work for the whole school to be together and then um you know, encourage discussion and questions. I I think that's a neat idea. I like the idea of a one, one book for the whole school to talk about, so Bill can. Think about. I think we're doing just ask this month, which is um about visibility awareness. She mentions the spectacular spectacular, which I always love and want to talk about. Um the lectures day assembly um this year will take place on Friday. It's had to remain closed to the public, but it will be streamed on Facebook at ten thirty. On that Friday following lectures day. That's that's November twelfth. Um so everybody tune in to the hotel school Facebook page and be sure to watch that. Both progress reports will go home on the nineteenth of November and our teacher conferences will happen there like before Thanksgiving.
I just want to also comment, one of the amazing things is Lauren, and she had reached out again about the. Ruler presentation, because as of this morning, there were only six responses. And she just texted to say she's sent out messages again, um no additional responses and talking to Caitlin. We talked about we scheduled a time and maybe we could get more of an audience, but she says Caitlin also mentioned it with the. Significant number of quarantine that we just sent out to be in that. So we're going to reschedule it. It's not going to. So and I I I, you know, oftentimes when we have these things, you know, it's. The same small handful of people who come, which is fine. I don't know how we can attract or engage a larger number of people. To keep them informed and share information, get their info. Could you get any ideas about how we might, you know, get. Way of participation, it looks like we have the idea.
Well, when you said it was offered, it was.
You know that they're doing it away free, okay, so. We want to charge people who come to give them, but it's not free, okay. But yeah, you think that would, no, we can certainly pick up some of the, what are some of those who come and it's like. For free, goodie bad.
I thought it was really smart to um have that presentation in the middle of the open house. I think that works well.
Yeah.
Because you got everybody. I mean, I think kind of like doubling up those events. Yeah. Like, I don't know how you.
How about in the middle of spectacular?
You want an ideas, this is what you get.
I like it. Right, uh that might impact the participation next year.
The holiday.
I I would hope so. I have not heard definitively that we want to have an April three concert.
We could have it out in the um very nicely lit covered playground with our um blankets. And in between, when, you know, the classes change, you have a little like, this is this part of rural. You know, they cover each other. Okay. Let's see, it's been a brief quiet month in the evenings, I believe. The policy, do we have the policy for you to finish off?
We do, remember my my final request, I should pass this COVID um. The revised COVID policies until eight thirty one twenty one. That could change on a dime.
Alright, well, let's.
So we now.
Now we can, now if we like to, we could go on. Does anyone have any discussion with others? Do you want to do us a summary?
Say that aloud, I've never seen it before.
Well, then do we want to take, give Donna a copy so she can do it and you can put in it? Since this will be like the second meeting?
It's a lot to read. But it's basically just putting things in place that are really mostly tied bound to the COVID. Window, to give us the possibilities and the authority to implement mandates. And comply with all of the health regulations and guidance from the CDC. Um there's an awful lot in there, but it's again, not something that's probably going to be relevant two years from now.
But we just go right off the window list.
So last year, we did, we we voted on one very similar, it, you know, the wind was just going to change. It's going, the rules have changed, but it was in place last year, you know, to give the board the authority to. Take whatever action came up that, you know, needed to come up because you can't predict, you don't know what's going to happen even a month from now. So it gives the board the flexibility to put things in place and to authorize the superintendent to make things happen in the county union. In response to any of that situation, you know, that's what's going to occur. So this is just an updated version of what we passed a year ago, so the. So that's kind of getting in that shell. I don't think there's anything that's controversial in your genre. It was fine to tone down every place that it's for schools and for schools. They found a lot of typos and we respected some of them. There's also that, you know, um. Spell check and all of that, make sure that we respected it as much as possible in full partnership, but in terms of.
It's largely boilerplate.
Yeah, well, okay, right, you know, a lot of terms. Yeah, we didn't make it up.
But if you turn my phone to what we didn't make and give us some. Responsible, that's the nature, so.
Then how we should do, we should, Kathy, make sure we get copies to Janet and Jay. So that they have a chance to read before the vote and defend them, otherwise they wouldn't back them either for that.
Is there anything else that you'd like to try and tell teacher?
I'm sure that I I have a notebook that I'm passing back. Along the hallways. Okay, so on that note, now we have not been updating policy books or doing policy books because the policies are all online. So if any of the policy books are out there are way outdated.
So don't give that back just forever.
So, oh no, but this is, this is just a book that you made.
For a policy.
For our.
Yeah, because we didn't, yeah, we stopped.
Okay, so that that is just a moment to kind of organize the inward stuff, like right now, the tuition um policy was tabled. If people want to know how much it costs and look at what the tuition rate might be, um so that's one of the minimums.
Okay.
Um so that would probably be in the binder, the homework thing was in there for. It was a long, so this is all just to kind of keep the inward in progress policy so that we don't lose track of them. Alright, so we will now put that on the agenda for next meeting. Second reading.
No.
Yeah, because I don't think we've had the check policy manual.
Since we put it on line, yeah. Right, this is just the one, so that was.
Yeah.
Oh, it's half that, yeah. And how they want to say to each other.
Erin forgot about it.
Lauren was able to make it.
Lauren couldn't make it.
Rachel, Rachel came, but then.
On Zoom, she popped in on Zoom, but there was, Lauren couldn't be here and so. Honestly, and I had like a ton of things to catch up on, so we.
Yeah, so we'll make sure that our January one is. Tonight, that's at six o'clock, but we are rescheduled because of. Yeah, um but I do have some things that I wanted to talk about with the teachers. So I believe I. I I have now updated slightly that one sheet and the brochure. The one sheet is specifically created for inclusion and the welcome to Northport packets that. Um the E C was working on, and actually today, we kind of really boarded about that uh that project. And I think that'll, I think that'll be really good. I do have one thing remaining to correct on those, those two pieces. Um I included a picture of what I hoped to be the um. My trust, the named trail that's over there.
Oh.
I think it's called something like Swamp Head Trail or something like that, which is.
The one behind.
Yeah. Anyway, um but I found a picture online and I said, oh, it's it, because I was more closely. It's the one, the picture I have on the brochure is the, like the dragon by Casey.
Oh, yeah.
Um so I'm looking for a picture. I would love to use a picture of that area. Have a picture or maybe take a picture. I have to place that. Um and what I would like to do is to look at how much it would cost to get, not a huge number, but like. A few brochures printed. The the one sheet won't be that hard to print, it won't be that expensive to print. But if we decided we want to have a few of those trifles made, um I think it would. That's what I wanted to mention. Um I spoke to Jenny Brown, who is involved with the. Um about uh starting a program where community members, specifically Isabella's. Um might come into the the school to do a session or two sessions or something like that about some um topic. Um like some enrichment topic that they would offer to their students. Um this is part of that, you know, which is communication's goal of. Keep linking together our town and our school. So let's say about that. Um and also uh. Well, maybe a few years ago, I I know we. Jen and I talked about this too, um thought thought again about ways to do the, that community connection. Without maybe doing like field trips to different areas in the town. I know COVID is still a thing and it's still happening, but we've gotten so much better at navigating how to, you know, make it all work. Uh it was hopeful that maybe we can start kind of building on that project. So um I would love to set that meeting, rest it to meet and. Joe won't be with us, but why are you going so deep? We've all had a great meetings together. Okay, William. So this is P T O. P T O had our spectacular, thank you to everyone who helped with that. Um particularly superstar, John J. Bill, who's a master and so, yeah, exactly. Step up, brought us lights, brought us sound, brought us drama, brought us everything we need to make the night. Um and to Sarah, who's serving us, put together our haunted house for years. And it was always a, it was a growth ahead. Um we had it, it worked well, I thought, in the kindergarten. I actually loved it there. I know people have mixed thoughts about it, but I'm pro. It was much better than last time because last time it was freezing and it was super dark and we had, especially the ceiling lights helped and the other. Lights on the side, it was warmer.
Yeah.
And I like that it just go up to the whole factor there. Much easier to clean up. You know, we just put everything back in that function area easily. Oh, and thank you also to the, to the teachers who, um, and to them, who, who, um. Did a great job being judges for our various, um, which is not always easy to. Coming up next. The next thing I think PTO has coming up is the holiday fair. PTO, the sixth grade has another, I'm not involved in this, but, uh, the ice box, the I C B S. Shirt and merch fundraiser, it's, if you go to the Facebook page, it'll teach you all different things. You can see the link and purchase your gear for the next, like, every guy's will be. But then you just close it out. It's, um, it's the, I, I, I spot, I, I. Shirts and sweatshirts, that's different than what I did last year. They have one design, a factory and different designs. But all of it was shift that you would. Right, well, that was the issue, was custom ink was out of the lot of the stock. So the page was had to find a different site and then. Well, she could easily add different colors so people could get sizes, custom ink was very difficult. To say, just, you know, allow people to pick whatever color they want, like you have to pick the. The product and decide the, the kinds of shirts and stuff.
Bonfire.
But to get the merch link, you probably, um, you have to go to the PTO page on Facebook. I can, how about I send it to you?
Yeah, I'm gonna send it to you right now. Yeah, it's a very warm link, like there's not a little code to put in.
Oh, okay. And now they're not, um, the bottle donations anymore that were, oh, I think they are doing it still. Um, Marinelle has been, Marinelle Pritchett is coordinating the bottle collection. Great, she didn't have to take it. I'll let her know, take, give you a copy. Yeah, come here and I'll call you.
I don't pick up sharp, I can go take it wherever it needs to go. I do not know, I have a dumpster, but that was another question, is there still a dumpster left?
Yeah, I know.
Oh, no?
No, I'm not collecting that. It's hard to keep that, that barrel maintained, so I think Marinelle has decided that. Uh, it's easier for her to arrange individual pickups, that sort of thing. So she was like, come to your house. People were putting a lot of dirty things that were not worth five cents.
Oh, you don't mind, you're, oh, mine are off.
No, but they were putting things that were like juice boxes, like things that were, yeah, those are, yeah. Those are to take care of. Okay, well, I have lots of names working here, so I'm not standing up there. Okay, so school safety and security, October second, Tuesday, so that, I think we should, that's the date last. But you're not on it, sorry, I just, I've already moved you there.
So we did, we had to have a, updated plan for the designer bonus process that's been submitted. We just finished getting all of the signatures and so we updated the signature file. The cameras, you know about. Doing good shape. Um, I don't know if you know, it's in the hallway, now they're all up in, above the door of us. The triangle numbers are about to be raised, we've got the window numbers are here. Um, they finally, the connection on, now it's, it was. A royal number that said two oh five, a window number that said two oh six, and another number at the top that said two oh seven. Right, so I'm having my. So they changed it all to where they were, they are numbers straight and we're in really good shape. We can do all of those drills, everything. Play the heart and light lights back on.
We're getting ready for this.
Distress. Okay, and then, um. The advisory group, anything to talk about there?
We did, and we're gonna be meeting again soon, uh, we kind of wanted to wait till after the election to. Great chance to, uh, have something to talk about and then, um, we're trying to stick, we were trying to fit it between this week. Which may or may not be happening.
It'll be very interesting, uh, see how things go in the next two months. Okay, all right, well, what's that? Is that on the, I should say on the agenda. Okay, um, a nominating committee, is that set up and do you, do you usually nominate for officers of the. Board and is that happening in December or now?
Well, it should, it should happen now because nominations have to be, um, for the first round of the meeting. In fact, we haven't had a thing like last year at the November meeting, we, um. It was a, an ad hoc nominating committee selected and I think. You were on there again, some people were supposed to send, you know, any nomination.
Two years ago.
And anyone that, you know, why, and then you presented.
So we should establish that as a committee. Um, how many members do we need to have on condition to? But then Kim wants to make the summary, so.
Yes, that's right.
She had emailed someone, we can't. Okay, well, how about, um. So then, um, anyone who's interested in making a suggestion for, um. Nominations, nomination candidates.
And also, it is common practice to allow for any event to nominate themselves to, to be, uh, the. And if we nominate someone, we should almost.
Well, you can. And the president, uh, not president, sorry.
Your chair.
I share in secretary. Yes. Okay. You are committees, committees, affiliations, our ad hoc, unfinished business, the tuition rate. We're getting late in our meeting time for us. Um, tuition rate is a, is a big enough, I think we should move on to our next, next month. Do you want to have that? Next agenda, please. Um, we've talked about our school calendar, we talked about our meeting schedule. Maybe a reminder about the tuition rate or like all of us to do whatever things are to happen.
But do you want like the current tuition rate?
Well, I think Warren's someone that's supposed to work at like the.
Yeah, I have people, yeah. I have that, I have a Gmail, you know. That is my personal, that has all the information.
Oh.
And I can read that with you, I think I just saw it, I would keep that. But I will.
Yeah, so we were having people look at different, different things.
Right, because we saw the current policy, because we just approved that. So we have that, but it's just not in the.
Yeah, so George was, was researching like what's, what other people do in other towns, so we can feel for what the current rates were with all different kinds of. Need scenarios to balance it out. Whether or not, you know, the idea being like, is this a viable way to add kids to a.
Yeah, this is pre-prognostics.
Right. Okay, um, I will be, have anything we need to add to our incentive agenda, so, um, I will be looking for.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Don.